Good morning, everyone. Almost the holiday season, so everybody should be in a very cheery mood here. And get ready for the cold about to happen. It is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. This is the regular meeting of the Taos County Board Commissioners. I hereby call this meeting to order.
Commissioner Farrow.
President.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Blackenham.
President.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
If everyone would please stand for the pledge and remain standing afterwards. Your vote, you leave us in the pledge.
Yes, I do my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're pleased to have the Taos Community Courts here to give us a little Christmas cheer before we start our meeting.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm going to introduce myself.
Julie Greer.
Thank you. Julie Greer, Board President, and these are a fantastic selection of singers. We're actually a group of about 60 people. Usually, 60 to 70. We're delighted to be here and we wish you all Merry Christmas. We're going to sing Angels We Have Heard on High. And feel free, if you've noticed, to sing along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angels we have heard on high, sweetly singing on the plains, and the mountains singing by, echoing their joyous strains. Gloria in their chersy sayo. Shepherds, why is too many? Why the joyous strains prolong? What the glad songs die free, which inspire your heavenly song? Gloria in their chersy sayo. Come to Bela and see, here whose worthy angels sing. Come adore amenity, Christ our Lord, our new King. Gloria in their chersy sayo. Sing with a major mate, whom thy words of angels praise. Mary chose some blessed rate, while our hearts in love we raise. Gloria in their chersy sayo.
Thank you very much. It's really difficult to do it early in the morning.
Thank you for calling.
Jerry, Chris, Edgar.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. You've been sitting that up for a couple of weeks. You've talked to me about the course a few while back.
And come join us in the spring, sing with us. The rehearsal starts January 23rd.
TaosCouristotour.
TaosCouristotour.
All right, thank you. Julie Greer. Before we go to approval of the agenda for Ernest's team, did you have something you wanted to run by us real quick regarding Taos County's hosts?
Yes, good morning. Commissioner Farrow, Commissioners, County Manager, as the Deputy Assistant. I just wanted to come by and formally invite you to join us on Thursday morning for opening ceremonies. We kind of hope that you guys can come. And we do have you on the agenda.
Oh.
Mr. Chair, so at that point, we'll let you introduce whoever is there from the county, whether it be, you know, the Presser, Clerk, or Commissioners.
All right.
And 9 o'clock. And the trucks, the grocery trucks have just gone to the armory, so anytime that any of you feel like you can come by and help us, hey, we'll take your help. And tomorrow, we fill boxes tomorrow. And thank you very much. May all of you have a blessed, blessed system and a happy Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ernestina. We'll see you Thursday morning. Missures, do we know if anybody else is going to attend to lead the post? Myself and Commissioner O'Donnell for sure, and possibly Commissioner O'Donnell. And I know Mark is busy and Tommy, you've got a project going, so who will represent? And any of the other electeds? Anna, if you're available and moving forward, Susan, Sheriff, and Amy, Lisa. All right, thank you for the invite. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I assume we approved the agenda with a few major additions under the presentation of the Chomisaw Reuse Center. Item 8, that we include for the minutes or when it's posted again, that includes Jean Nichols, who is a MAS community guide, and also Neil Filke, who is a volunteer at the reuse center. So if we could include those two names, and I assume we approve the agenda as presented.
Also, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we're rushing a second to approve the agenda with the addition of Jean Nichols' name and Neil Filke's name specific to the presentation of the Chomisaw Reuse Center. Clerk Paul Leroy.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is a part of our agenda generally, and that's when we get to recognize our employees. The sad thing is, is these are employees that have or are leaving us. And the first being the presentation of a certificate of retirement to Ms. Jessica Gutierrez. She's in the planning department, has been for many, many years, and actually was eligible to do this a long time ago, but out of her dedication to the citizens of Taos County, she stayed until we could get somebody to fill her position. She'll never be filled, but somebody will be in that position. Mr. B. Hill.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Clerk Martinus, Clerk Colton, Mr. Harman, members of the public staff. On behalf of the Taos County Planning Department, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, today I respectfully tell you before you, on a bitter sweet note, effective December 31st, 2017, Ms. Jessica, Jessie Gutierrez, will retire from Taos County after 27 years and nine months of service to Taos County and its citizens. We are excited for Ms. Gutierrez as she begins a new chapter in her life. Ms. Gutierrez began her career with Taos County at the young age of 17, while still attending Taos High School. Ms. Gutierrez has spent her entire career with Taos County, has employed at the Taos County Planning Department, and is leading Taos County with the title of Chief Building Official. Ms. Gutierrez has been a Taos County Building Official Inspector for over 20 years and has been involved in Taos County's building projects throughout her career. Ms. Gutierrez is very familiar with Taos County and throughout, and through her inspections and other related work. Ms. Gutierrez has traveled in a lot of areas, sometimes out to drive through other counties to reach a job site, and oftentimes through inclement weather. Ms. Gutierrez leads Taos County as the existing longest tenured employee with 27 years and nine months, and will be retiring at the young age of 46. It is certainly noteworthy to acknowledge that Ms. Gutierrez will be one of the first female building inspectors in the state of New Mexico. In a field where the primary workforce is male, as a female, Ms. Gutierrez has been able to excel. Ms. Gutierrez has made many friends throughout her career, and I love, with so many others, consider Ms. Gutierrez a friend. On your personal note, Jessica, I will miss you. You and I have worked together alongside each other for nearly 24 years. You have assisted me in several different ways, as you have assisted the entire planning department, coworkers, and most importantly, public. And I am grateful for your mentorship. Jessie, I'm sure the planning staff can all share many different stories, but Jessie, you, Becky, and I have been through a lot together. We've had rows, and downs, heartaches, and trumps. And through it all, we were really friends. You have provided leadership, guidance, and instruction to David, Rachel, and Rachel, and I believe that you lead David and Rachel and the building department on the program. Thank you. Thank you for everything, and good luck in the future. On behalf of the Taos County Board Commissioners, County Manager Corloin, Deputy County Manager Harman, the management team and staff, congratulations on your retirement and dedication to Taos County. Please accept the certificate of retirement. Jessie, Taos County Certificate of Retirement to Jessica C. Gutierrez for your outstanding contributions and commitment to Taos County and the citizens of Taos County, whereas at the tender young age of 17, while still attending Taos High School, Ms. Gutierrez became an employee of Taos County. Whereas for the next 27 years and nine months, Ms. Gutierrez was employed at the Taos County Planning Department. Whereas in a field where the primary workforce is male, as a female, Ms. Gutierrez is able to excel and is gaining the respect from her peers, including the building community. Whereas the Taos County Board Commissioners, management, and staff desire to wish you a journey of success and happiness and a new picture of your life. Presented to you, Jessie Gutierrez, this 19th of December, 2017. Congratulations.
Thank you. Although this is so bittersweet for me to you, I know nothing else, one job, one way life. I want to thank you guys, all of Taos County. I've been through 29 directors in my tenure. Accountless Commissioners, Managers, fellow employees. I've been in quite a bit in my 29 years. But I will tell you something. I will forever be grateful to Taos County for what they have allowed me to accomplish. And I want to thank you guys for that opportunity. Thank you guys again.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman. Geez, Jessie, I was really surprised when I heard through Facebook that you were retiring. You and I share a special mom who is in heaven now, Mrs. Santi Steller. And she would be just so proud of you. And you know that she's watching for you. You know, I know that you depended on her as well as your own mother and your own parents for a lot of guidance. And so, thank you for making her proud, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Presser. Presser Blackenham.
Thank you, Chairman. Jessica, I can still remember when you first became an inspector and added to the planning department. And the whole community, you know, the whole construction community of Taos, you really are a wonderful person to work with.
Thank you.
Yeah, except with the red tags and all.
If you'll stick around after we do the next one, we'd like to get a picture with you. And we'll go through that. I got to work alongside with you as fire marshal during a really hard white career. I think we did a lot of good things together. Thank you for the guidance and what you taught me.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the next one, which is another one that I worked alongside with for the majority of his career. He was always a good friend and one hell of a deputy. The next is I to be presentation of a certificate of retirement presented to Mr. Salidon Gallegos with our Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Jerry Colton.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. It's my privilege to be here with you today. Let me just preface by saying, many of, and most of the deputies intended to be here today to honor Salidon and his retirement. Unfortunately, they are on an assignment, a very treacherous assignment for today. So they were not able to be here. But I think no one more than Salidon can appreciate the dedication that Sheriff's deputies have, especially in the time and needs of others. So with that, what can be said? Salidon's an outstanding person. I'm proud to call him my friend as well. When I came into office, Deputy Gallegos was one of the first to support me in the transition. Quickly showed interest in becoming or detecting, and during his tenure of working several cases in his capacity, doing the trainings, keeping things afloat, and assisting the junior deputies with their investigations and giving them the guidance along the way, was a tremendous asset to the department. And Salidon will certainly be missed in that capacity. I'm proud that he is remaining in the law enforcement career. He has accepted employment and is now working at the Taos Tribal DPS Department. Without doubt that he will excel there as well and do many great things and bring resolution in many cases throughout the community in his capacity there. So with that, I also need to say that in September, when Salidon announced that he was considering his retirement, we made a plan at the office to buy a retirement badge to honor him in his capacity, but none other has been. That badge is still on that one. And I'm sad to say that I'm not able to present it to you today. Perhaps in the future we'll have another short recognition for that. So with that, the plaque that was presented today comes from Taos County, and it says, "With great honor, recognition, commendable, and dedicated service, you are truly Taos County's finest." Thank you for your 20 years you have given to Taos County Sheriff's Department. Your tireless work ethic and professionalism have set the tone for the rest of the department. Presented to retired Sheriff's Deputy Salidon Gallegos with pride, respect, and love. You will always have a home here. We wish you the best, best of luck in all your future endeavors. Thank you for giving above and beyond in servicing the citizens of Taos County. And it's signed by the Chair and all Commissioners. Salidon, congratulations, brother.
Well, I'd like to thank you guys, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, the community of Taos. 20 years has been a long time. I've been, you know, seen a lot of things go on here in Taos. I've heard a lot here in Taos. I was born and raised here, but that may make things any easier. To think of them, to Commissioners, Managers, Sheriffs, I've known a few, four sheriffs. They always have, including the Commissioners, they've always had my back. There's, like I said, there's been up and down and stuff going on. I always had support. We always knew somebody that would be there. Commissioner Farrow, a good friend of mine, we've gone through a lot together before. I was a police officer. Anna over here also, we've gone through a lot of things. You guys know how it was before I became a cop and to get up there and actually say that I was a police officer here in Taos County for many years and actually retired here. That says a lot. I started off my career with the detention center, did about a year there, and then I did the rest of my time with the Taos County Sheriff's Department. I just want to tell you guys, oh, thank you, thank you for the support. I want you guys to keep on supporting the law enforcement community. Realize that they are, they do see a lot of good things and you go through a lot of bad things. And remember that they do need support during those bad things as well as the good things, and they need to be recognized as well. One evening shift, I parked a little bit behind, but I did get another employment with the Taos Tribal. So I am involved with the community as well. I also spoke with the Sheriff and the other Sheriff, and I advised them that, you know, I still am part of Taos County. And if my services or anything that I can do to help with any type of investigations, I would still be available. With that said, I just want to thank you all for being here and for supporting, supporting me in my whole career.
I've seen you grow up, become a man, and as I said before, one hell of a deputy. I was sent as wrestling coach when he was in high school. We have seen, seen him grow up. And I'm very proud to have been a part of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Missures.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna get picture time now. You know, you don't like pictures, so. Chairman, will I be in here or outside?
I'll put this up front.
I don't know which one to look at now. I feel like we're training them to try to. Jess?
Yeah, hard work, hard work.
Hard work.
Hard work.
Mr. Chairman, Missures of the family, I failed to invite you to the cake and punch for Jesse. We have tomorrow in the planning department for those of you who may be going to the 4:00. Come on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am not good at this. I just want to say thank you. Thank you both very much for all that you've done for Taos County. It's amazing, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 6, Citizens Want Service. If there's anything you would like to address the Commission on today, something that's on the agenda later or something, and we're not able to stay, or just something else you need to talk to us about, we ask that you keep your comments for five minutes or less. But we invite you to come and speak to the Commission at this time. Usually, we're recognizing Mr. Filke about this time, but he's in the next meeting, so we'll wait. Anybody wishing to address the Commission? Okay, seeing none, we thank you all for being here today. And we will move on to Item 7, which is the Minutes. Ask Secretary Corloin of the December 5th, 2017 Regular Meeting Minutes of Commission.
Motion approved.
I'll second Mr. Chairman. Motion, I second, to approve the Minutes for the December 5th, 2017 Regular Meeting. Clerk Paul Leroy.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes. Thank you, Missures. Mr. Chairman. Yes. It's Mr. Filke, alright. You happy to go before us? I can explain. Back, you're not sitting in your seat, but we'll save it for you soon. I know. So next item is, this is Item 8. Presentation, this will be a presentation regarding the Chomisaw Reuse Center. This will be by Mr. Jean Nichols, the person with better attendance than most of us, Mr. Neil Filke.
Thank you very much for, well, I just want to say that one of the problems of working for the nonprofit sector on salary is that this is my retirement. This needs to go a little slower. So I'm just going to show this brief, maybe very brief, presentation of the pictures from the reuse center. Thank you very much for allowing us to open it. It's been a huge success so far. Everybody really appreciates it. And you can go, okay, so we began in 1998. We built the reuse center out of shredded paper bales, which was an experimental building. So we had to get, we had to get permission from the construction industry, so we had to jump through a whole lot of hoops. It was originally a project that we hoped to be able to do for a lot less money and in a lot less time, but it took two years to do. Let me go to the next slide. And that's Alan Siegel doing any word of mention, but he's also a. The story behind it was that this building could have been done for less than $1,000. Actually, $216 for the bales. The bales only cost $8 when we, when we first conceived of it. And the person who came up with the whole concept stole the. And the person who came up with the whole concept stole the first truckload of bales and took them away. And then because we had to jump through all the hoops and get it approved by the construction industries, we had to build it with post and beam. By the time we were ready to do it, the bales cost $25 apiece. We had another truckload brought down. But we persevered and we went through all the coating and the permitting and, you know, finally got it built. It opened in 1999. So, you know, that quote about, you know, "If all objections must first be overcome, nothing will ever be attempted" was kind of the theme of the whole thing. Then we invited local youth to come paint on it. Part of it was from the American War Project with little kids and also we found some graffiti painters from around town and tried to get them to paint, you know, art on approved buildings. Not everybody likes graffiti art, but I do still. We appreciated the one thing in the back, which is hard to read, but it says "Top War", was done by a famous painter from Paris, France, whose mother lives here and is a volunteer. And so he's, so I wanted to preserve those paintings. The county didn't really like what was on the front, so we re-stuccoed it and we're gonna, you know, perhaps do another mural project in the future. Okay, go to the next one. So, you know, the reuse center operated for sixteen-plus years, but it was often a mess because we weren't there all the time and people would just throw things around and then we would come in whenever we felt like it was too bad and then we cleaned it up. So what we do is we save the excess clothes and store, we were storing them at Sides Warehouse, and over ten years we've saved 64,000 pounds of clothes, giving them to Clothes Helping Kids, which is a nonprofit from Albuquerque. And they in turn usually grant grants for kids' projects in the Piñasco area and elsewhere in northern Mexico. So we felt like the reuse center was the inspiration for the Glam Trash Fashion Show, which I know is a popular Tauski County, town of Tauski event. And also it was the inspiration for Upcycled Fashion, where we got a lot of the clothes that we then refashioned. Now that is in mora, run by Anita Moss, and we've kind of given that away. It's got a new use of its own. So it is an entrepreneurial incubator. So in the fall of 2015, both the state and Tauski County closed the reuse center due to the fact that it wasn't properly maintained. And, you know, part of this, you know, people didn't like, the county, Solid Waste Department in particular didn't like the graffiti on the front, so we've stuccoed over that and we'll put another one on. I personally like graffiti art, so it was, you know, but that was one of the compromises we made in order to get it up and running again. And it opened on September 5th. First, after the facelift, so we got the front stuccoed and we got the reuse center repainted by the same artist from Paris, who did the back. And the county, you know, helped us put in parking and, you know, smoothed the parking and we did a lot of repairs on the building, fixed the doors, fixed the windows, tried to make it road proof, which is kind of possible anywhere and especially at the dam. So now we're open, we're fully open and we're staffed with volunteers. It's been very well used. It seems to be working, you know, quite well, so onward and upward with, you know, keeping it that way. So items, we're taking items out again. We were supposed to do it exactly in two weeks, but it's working very well just with, you know, figuring out what, most items come and go very quickly, so. Especially fabric, I've been very impressed that a lot of people are still sewing and sewing quilts and so I brought a lot of fabric and it's all being taken right away. We just got a new container for the clothes and we got two cats, resident cats, so to take care of whatever wrong there was.
They're also volunteers.
They're volunteers. And, you know, we've saved this much, this many clothes already since we've been open. As soon as this container is full, Clothes Helping Kids will come back up and pick it up. And of course, they give us $5 a pound, which barely covers the cost of, you know, plastic bags. It's not really, you know, much income, but at least it goes to a good source and stays out of the landfill. Here's some, just some, you know, some of the great toys that come in and out, you know, it's, I've been very impressed with the quality of things that people are bringing these days. It's not like the old days where people were bringing stuff that was very marginal. Everything seems to be, you know, clean and hardly anything broken. I'd only have to throw into the dumpsters probably one small bag about once a week, so that's successful. Books are a problem. So right now in my car, I have four boxes of books that we're just, you know, they are getting to be too many, so we still have to figure out what to do with books. I hope it's not that nobody's reading anymore, but I know everybody's on Kindle and this and that. People do take books. I see books go out of there, but there's also an awful lot, so we're trying to figure that out. Our resident cats are settled in and comfortable and everybody loves themselves. Okay, so it cost us a little over the $5,000 we had allotted to get it up and running and, you know, that's just the reality of things. But still, for a very small amount, you know, $6,000, that includes the container. If anybody wants to ask questions later, they can about all that. Ideally, we'd like it to become a paid position. At first I thought it was okay just to be volunteers because of course it's stuff going out to the community, so they should put in their time, but I'm spending an awful lot of time managing that, so. And this is my retirement. So we'll see how that goes, you know. I'm gonna try to get funding in order to have it become a paid position, which I think would be good. It would cost approximately $17,000 to do that. This is just sort of a footnote to say that I know that there's problems with recycling. I'm constantly asked about when there's gonna be recycling in Chomisol because it's been promised for years, but I understand the downgrade in the markets and the, you know, current problems that there are with recycling. So I just want to say that, you know, I'm here to help brainstorm on ideas with that and we'll try to figure out a way to do that because I think it would be a mistake to abandon recycling just from public education and the whole, you know, it's a step backwards. So if we can figure out how to make that all work, I'm happy to help. So thank you very much for, all your help, especially Ms. Andrew and Ms. Stafford and Candice. So thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Philkey?
No, he should come with all bases. Oh, yes.
Yeah, I know he wants to say that.
Should I get my email? Which is a bucket of pressure, possibly. Oh, compact trash can. Despite of the junk sitting along the side of the bins, you know, I don't know if it's ever been plugged into anything or whether it really works or whether it's just a tribute to irresponsible former Commissioners. Will you get it evaluated?
Yes, we're looking at that. If we need to acquire any more, if we get to a camping area, just get the compact.
And the other thing I'd like to mention is that, you know, I see truckload upon truckload of hares, willows and other stuff get, you know, put in the dumpsters. And there's a big area right behind the reuse center that I guess is just for flood control or whatever, but it would seem to me that if those branches could be put aside and there could be a chipper maybe quarterly or whatever, you know, and it could be used for mulch, it would save a lot from the landfills. So that's one of the things, you know, I'm thinking that some of the recyclables as well could be used locally. I know that most of them can't because of the sheer volume, but glass I would think would be something that we could crush and use in various places locally.
There's plenty of already crushed glass available. If you have a need for it from the recycling center, it could be, it could be yours tomorrow. So if you find a need for that, get ahold of, for the Android and French.
Yeah, because we do, Moskew and Dodd was able to purchase the charter school in Piñasco and we're hoping to build a walking path around the outside of it and I thought that that would be a good ground cut.
Check it out and make sure it's the material you're thinking, we can make that happen.
Yeah, so, you know, just to encourage it so that, because I would hate to see that we're not accepting glass anymore. I know the county and the town need to work together and figure all that out and so, you know, I'm willing to help with them if I can.
If we can use a lot of it, then that's gonna make sure that they continue to take less, so it's a good thing. If they have a use for it, let's get it done.
Yeah, let's get it done. So thank you very much for all your help, you know, over the years.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you so much, Jean. And if I may, I have just a small token I wanted to present.
And Candice is one of our volunteers up there, so I commend her for that.
Butter, give her more hours, please.
That's your asset, I'll build a trap for her.
Mr. Chairman, I would also encourage you to come up and volunteer maybe once every six months or any of the other Commissioners to see what comes in and what goes out and also witness how this has helped so many people. And it would break your heart to see some of the people that come in who are poor and walk away with things that they can't afford. So what I'd like to present to Jean and Neil is some seeds to represent that from small ideas come wonderful things and that this is a token that it continues to grow and thrive. So this is, Jean, this is from a squash in Los Trampas that was given to me and so there are the seeds for replanting. And the same for you, Mr. Philkey, because I'm in your garden. And also would like to present the sand from the Madralla sand painting of the monks. In Santa Fe, they did a closing ceremony and what they do at the end is they sweep the sand and they give it to people as a blessing. This Madralla took about two weeks for the monks to create. It was beautiful. And so I wanted to give this to Jean for all her efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, too. Thank you.
Mr. Porter. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I also just want to thank Ms. Nichols, the entire group. We were one of those challenges she mentioned. We did not mean to make it more difficult on them, but they did persevere and get through the requests that the county put on and being the partner at the local government level, I appreciate that they persevered, that they did not ever slow down and they were always consistently moving forward. And I would thank Commissioner O'Donnell as well for her efforts. So it is a good program and I hear a lot of positive things in the community, so thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. Philkey, if you'll go to your regular chair.
All right, moving on to the agenda, the next item is Consent Agenda, Item Number Nine. I will read the Consent Agenda. If any Commissioner would like any item pulled, that will leave the next business after the approval of the remaining Consent Agenda. Item A is Approval of DFA Resolution Number 13 for 2017-18 Fiscal Year, Resolution Requesting to Adjust the 2018 Fiscal Year Final Budget to Transfer Permanent Cash from the General Fund Reserves to Capital Fund for Professional Services Associated with Litigation and Judgment. Item B is Approval of Increase in the Amount of $4,399.92 for the Rio Fernando Fire Station Mental Building. Item C is Approval of Amendment Number One for the Grant Award Agreement of the State of New Mexico Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department Number 17-521-0410-0139 for the Carson Volunteer Fire District. Item D is Approval of Amendment Number One for the Grant Agreement for the State of New Mexico Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department Number 17-521-0410-0146 for Rio Fernando Volunteer Fire District. Item E is Approval of Amendment Number One for Grant Agreement for the State of New Mexico Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department Number 17-521-0410-0141 for the Wheeler Peak Fire District. Item M is Approval of Budget Adjustment for the General Fund of the Office of Emergency Management, 0101-1800. Item G is Approval of Budget Adjustment, General Fund for Sheriff's Department, 0101-0500 and Animal Control, 0101-1800. Item H is Approval of Budget Adjustment for the Detention Fund, 0226. Item I is Approval of Budget Adjustment for Special Revenue Fund, 0211. And Item J is Approval of Memorandum of Understanding between Tauski Valley and Tauski County to Provide Bus Line Service to Tauski Valley from 12/15/2017 till 3/25/2018. Commissioners, I've read the Consent Agenda. I'm seeking approval for the Consent Agenda adjustment.
Move for approval.
Second motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda. Clerk Oliver.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blackeney.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Department Heads, for all of the work and Lori and Mikey for all their stuff to keep that going. The next item, Department Matters, which is Item 10. This will be a discussion and update regarding Straight Hearts, regarding confinement services, low-cost state shooter services, and other discussion. This was originally going to be led by Sheriff Jerry Holbrook, but he is on a assignment in West Rim. And so we have Ms. Lucas here today to representing Straight Hearts. And then we also, I saw animal control officers from the Town End County. I think maybe she had to leave. And we have Mr. Richard Sanchez with Tauski County that will be able to answer anything once he gets here in a few months or animal control. Ms. Lucas, how are you today?
I'm doing well, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for having me today.
Hi, Ellen. Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the sheriff wanted this item on the agenda. I think we're mostly a discussion of the Straight Hearts contract that we had and to give Ms. Lucas an opportunity to update us with her new tenure. She's been with Straight Hearts over six months now?
Oh, two months.
Two months, oh wow.
Seems like six months some days, but I haven't listened yet.
At this time, I'll just remind the Commission that our contract with Straight Hearts is good for another six months. It doesn't expire until June of this year, so I just wanted to preface the presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Sanchez, do you want Ms. Lucas to begin?
She will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I wasn't sure exactly what you needed me to present today. I was supposed to go out and meet with Sheriff Holbrook last week and that never came to fruition. All I really came with are under numbers for you.
Perfect. That's fine.
Okay, so today, as of yesterday, we have a total of 105 dogs and 105 cats. I see the numbers there. Of the county, the number of dogs is 62, the number of cats is 54. Year-to-date totals for the county are 1,318. So we're kind of full right now. That's all I can say. For a good very time he has to come, we kind of have to dance around, try to figure out where we're going to put everybody because we are literally at double our capacity. As for your contract, I'm not really sure what details you wish to discuss today. So I guess.
Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Porter.
What I was told by the sheriff when I got here was that he wanted to go over the state litter.
Um, the budget allocated for that, I think we had somewhere around $25,000 allocated for that. Um, we wanted to see the progress. Is Stray Hearts just gonna be able to do actual spay and neuter program? And so we could actually use up some of that money, because there aren't a lot of people in the county that would need spay and neuter at low cost. And we have them referring them to Españoza or helping them get vouchers from other agencies.
And it's spay and neuter and chipping, correct?
Um, the spay and neuter from us, the chipping would be from them.
And, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think that was the biggest topic with spay and neuter. I think we did want to ask Stray Hearts where they were at with, um, a veterinarian and if they had anyone in-house at this time to have new prospects, to bring a veterinarian in. Um, I know that, um, for a while there, the population had gone down tremendously at, at Stray Hearts, so, um, maybe you could shed some light onto that increase. And it does have something to do with a veterinarian.
Well, some of it does have to do with a veterinarian, but the other aspect of it is it's where the tail end of puppy and kitten season and holiday season. And it seems like after Thanksgiving or before Thanksgiving, people want to go away for vacation, and instead of boarding their animal or paying a pet sitter, they're relinquishing them, which is, is mind-blowing to us when you're in the front office with this stuff. But the other aspect of it with the vet is we have a vet, Dr. Thompson, who does come in and volunteer her time as an as-needed basis. She literally walks down the street from Salazar Vet and helps us with our certificates, a lot of our animals right in our line of transfers, um, which is kind of necessary to keep our numbers down, because as soon as 10 go out, 20 come in. This is a constant thing, it's every single day. And I don't know if it's all related to with cross-spay and neuter, because for us, we have to take our animals to Españoza and Santa Fe as well. So with those costs, um, we share those with the folks who have their animals either seized or if they, um, are found as stray or if they're brought in for citations, they are not to receive their animal out of the shelter until it is spayed and neutered. Therefore, they do have to pay that cost. Sometimes there is a bit of, of discussion on the cost of all of that, because we also have to charge $20 a day fee for housing the animals, which sometimes we have to renegotiate, because if we get an animal in and have to pay the spay and neuter, the microchip, and all of the vaccinations, the fee that goes back to that person is generally around $120 to $140. Sometimes people don't have that fee. And then if we tack on the daily charges on top of things, then it really becomes unaffordable. So oftentimes we have to weigh, do we want to place this animal back into someone's home who may or may not be responsible? Who may not have the means to take care of the animals? And so we pretty much have to do this on a case-by-case basis. Um, there are policies in place, and we generally follow those policies. But again, on a case-by-case basis, if someone has a situation, or say if someone was pet-sitting, which just happened last week, somebody was pet-sitting their father's dog. Dog got out, got sent to us. Dad's in Japan, daughter can't pay for the fee. So those kinds of situations we're dancing with all the time. We also have animals that have been here that were seized by the town that we've had housed since early June. Those bills are racked up to close to $25,000. And you know darn well that when finally those hearings do come to fruition because of delays and cancellations and rescheduling, we still have to house those animals. So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place with those situations. As for the spay and neuter, um, we have been talking to Mr. Ellis about leasing the spay and neuter van that they have available to us. We're trying to figure out with dogsters that they're scheduling to come back up to, to do spays and neuters. There's also a new vet in town who was willing to do a mobile, um, practice. But we still have, since he's just started this past week, we're still, um, trying to set up a meeting with him to figure out if we can work hand-in-hand with him. You're all aware of the adjustments that Stray Hearts has been going through. And so we're trying to really just get our ducks in a row. Um, we're working through all of our financial, um, responsibilities, and we've reduced them to almost nothing now. So we're gonna be able to start the new year in a much healthier financial, um, place than we have been before. We have new board members who are very dedicated to working on this issue. We're also revamping our website. We're updating everything. Social media tends to be overlooked, but right now with the way of the world, social media is pretty much the best way we can get our adoptions through. We just had an adoption, the Dr. Bum Saturday. We adopted out $7 in two hours. We got close to $600 in donations, close to $700 in adoption fees. So things are looking up toward us. It's just that I've only been here two months, so I'm really, by going over your contract, um, has been an eye-opening experience. We do have limitations, maybe like those of any organization. So we really are doing our due diligence, trying to, to restructure, trying to come up with financial stability, which we have done. Our budgeting is, is, is now being done with a completely fine tooth comb. And if you want to discuss those things in a, in more executive session, if you just want to stay in your office and try to spread this over to that round table, I'd be glad to do it, or we can bring lunch.
Um, if you know, Maureen Wood, how much of that $25,000 we allocated for spay and neuter has been?
I don't know.
What type of expenses?
None of it has been. Uh, we did, when we spent money, it was on last year's budget for the spay and neuter. Um, the $25,000 that we do have in the budget now, it's still there.
They will.
Still have it.
Six months.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, um, as Ms. Lucas mentioned, we had the same challenges that Stray Hearts have right now in finding the low-cost spay and neuter options for us. Some of those options we had in the past are no longer available, like, um, the mobile unit out of Santa Fe. I understand from the sheriff that sold, that they're no longer offering that, that service to us. So we are in the same boat. I think that's a big reason why the sheriff wanted to talk with Ms. Lucas today about spay and neutering in general and what ideas might be out there, because we do have that money available to us, but at this point, we're not getting the best thing for the buck. If we were to just put it out there, we're looking at very expensive per-animal costs. So we would hope that we could work with Stray Hearts to come up with a solution that drives the cost per animal down to make the most out of our allocated $25,000. Um, but we have the same challenge that they have. Mr. Sanchez can attest to that.
And I will say this, as far as Stray Hearts goes, this has probably been the best run it's been since I've been here, literally over five years. And I've seen a lot more changes at Stray Hearts, a lot more from the intake side, as far as all the transports are going, how fast they get out of the animals, how fast, everything, they're already gets called, how fast their own social media. So this has been the best absolute of Stray Hearts' run.
Is Linda pretty much agreeing with that?
Yeah, she's pretty much in the same boat there.
Linda's too. Anything else, Commissioner, Commissioner O'Donnell and then Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So on the item we gave a budget adjustment, could someone maybe reiterate what we did for that? With their general fund, Sheriff's Department, and Animal Control, how much you worked?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, that was, um, in order for the sheriff and animal control officers to purchase the body armor, um, which had actually been expired or close to expiring, and it hasn't shelved by yet, and we really needed to purchase that for all of our officers. So the adjustment on the animal side was small compared to, it was just for the two officers we have. So, and I think he took that out of the transportation cost that you called.
Yeah, transportation and, um, I think it was for items and supplies.
Supplies.
That's what it came out of.
So that was what that adjustment was for, the body armor and the officers.
So I'm wondering, the town now owns that mobile van?
The town did buy that mobile van from Stray Hearts. Um, as far as I know, they haven't really done much with it. It's supposed to be loaned out when they want it. It's supposed to be loaned out, tax will be a money maker for them. But they have not done anything as far as budgeting, getting in contact with vets. I have tried to get in contact with several vets. Um, we actually did call somebody from Santa Fe, but she didn't seem to be able to come during the winter months, because it is winter and it's very, very hard to drive that, their van. So our best bet is to see what we can do locally and see if we can drive them.
I'm wondering if we might just start with, uh, requests for quotations or requests for bids from the local vets, give a specific amount to spay and see what they bid it at. Maybe the local vets would go down. I know there's a Vettan Angel fire that I hear is pretty reasonable. Um, and then at some point, uh, we were going to buy the trailer and purchase it, I believe it was $40,000. So I'd really like to revisit Stray Hearts' budget during the next budget cycle, given that they have had a flat budget with no even 3% increase over 17 years or so, which would have accounted for an additional $50,000 a year. So, um, I, I think we could probably find solutions. It sounds like unless we give them infusion, um, they're not gonna be able to hire a vet, because vets are extremely expensive. Uh, maybe, maybe that's not the case. We just recently wrote several grants, and one of them is for $75,000 to hire a vet. Um, and considering our statistics, um, I'm thinking that we should qualify, but we aren't going to know until February 1st. So, yeah, that's what I was thinking, it's a cost of about $75,000. And I also wanted to recognize the president of Stray Hearts. If you want to maybe come forward, she's a constituent from my district. Um, she drives quite a ways to... We just want to introduce yourself, please.
I'm Barbara Ann Downs Van Tausen.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you, Bishop. This gal is fantastic. She has brought such good energy. Stray Hearts, thank you. Good things are coming. I just picked up two computers from the Towes Community Foundation. We are now one of them. I'm there to call this against, yes. But anyway, good factors. Good things are happening at Stray Hearts.
Thank you.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I address one more thing? We did, um, approach Santa Fe Shelter to ask if they could give us more of a blanket, um, budgetary cost, because depending on different animals that go down, sometimes its costs can fluctuate. So we were just recently given a quote of $90 as a flat fee for everything that comes in, including the membership. So that's the take, that's to start up in January 15th, I believe. So that should help with our budgetary costs as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bishop Blakely.
Thank you, Chairman. So the animals that you spay and neuter, where do you do that?
Um, most of the animals that are spayed and neutered either goes to Españoza or Santa Fe.
Uh, is there still equipment? Do you guys still have the equipment that is required?
Yes, sir, we do. Every, in fact, our surgical suite was approved for surgery. We just, we can't get the license, because we don't have a vet that's licensed in New Mexico to go through all of that. But yes, we, we met the criteria. In fact, we exceeded it.
So the, so spay and neuter's could be done in-house if we had somebody to do them?
Yes, sir.
And, and what are, um, so is the $75,000 a year? Is that's what you're estimating it would cost to hire a vet that would take care of the spay and neuter needs?
That is the highest amount of the grant that we can qualify for. So if I can grab one for $75,000, even if we were to hire a vet one day a week, it would make such a significant difference.
That, that seems to me to be such a obvious solution to the problem. You could hire a vet a day a week, use the equipment that we have right here at home.
Yes, sir.
And crank them out.
Absolutely.
Right? And so why don't we use that $25,000 for that? Why don't we use that $25,000? Why don't we contribute another $25,000 this coming year? And, because we saved, we were all excited, you know, that we had allocated $25,000 last year and not that any of it was spent.
Yes.
So we've saved it, maybe we can double down on that. And, and if, if you can get some estimates of what it would cost to bring in a vet one day a week, I think that that's a direction you, you should, uh, consider and come to us with that.
That's exactly what I'm trying to do. The, what we're trying to overcome is the old reputation that we have. And, you know, that's gonna take some time. And so basically, we're trying to nurture those relationships and prove to them financially and structurally within our organization that we are making those adjustments. And we are getting started to get some positive feedback from the vets. So I'm, what I wanted to do was to see, the other thing I would like to ask the vets, um, I wasn't sure I should bring this up in a public forum, but if we were to have, um, a low-cost vaccination microchipping clinic one day, even just one day a month, this is what we did with my old, my old, um, shelter, if each vet would donate two hours one day a year, if it was just one weekend in, in each month, we could get a low-cost vaccination microchipping clinic going through, say, March through December. Summer months would be earlier in the day, winter months would be later in the day. We have the perfect facility over here in our patio. People could just literally move through. We do have, we do have the irons in the fire for that, but again, we're trying to overcome our history.
Well, starting, starting those programs would go a long way to overcoming the history. Not only that, it would go a long way to helping the problem in the future.
I agree.
You know, and so that's, that's really where, I think, I'm glad to hear that you're focusing on that. Um, what's the average, uh, number of days that the animals stay in shelter?
It depends on, on the type of animal. You know, we have pit mixers that have been there for months. We have a couple that are going on years.
Right.
Which I have, I have to address that, because I just find that hard. But that's, that's an internal thing.
Yeah.
But the average day is about 54 days. And that's a long time.
That's a very long time.
So that's our work on transfers. We have six additional transfer partners. We've just, um, kind of been working with for the past two months. We keep getting those bills. So we're doing a lot more transfers than we have. We also just got our new van this week, so that's exciting. So today it's going up to get inspected and certified in Colorado, so we can increase our transports. And we have transports scheduled all next week.
Yeah, well, those transports have always been one of the programs that we've been able to...
Yes, they're nonsense.
We've been able to maintain. So I, I look forward to hearing, um, more about the possibility of, of getting the spay and neuter up and running and some vaccination days, and of course, selling county licenses with all of that. So if we do a subsidized spay and neuter, then they, they have to purchase a license. I think it's $15 for two years.
And if we could always get that done all in one fail-sweep?
That's always been, it's always been the idea. It seems like a simple idea, but it's never, it's never happened.
And let's do that.
Let's do that.
Let's do that.
I think you see that you've got the support of this commission, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thought. I support the Commissioner from District Four in, in that. And, but I would want to say, I think, you know, since we have our county manager who's finance guy, if we did put out a bid just to see the cost, we're, we're gonna know that, uh, just having an in-house vet is probably gonna be most cost-effective. And I feel like we've been on a hamster on a wheel that goes around and around. And the reason these, we have such a high population is because of, you know, these issues. Even the town's purchase of this mobile van sounds like it may have been an ill-advised purchase. But, but I do want to say I really would like to see numbers. And I think it's time we, if they don't get this grant, that we, uh, look about the $75,000 as an additional funding source or roll that spay and neuter money in. Um, but I think that sounds like our solution.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I mean, I would rather work with Stray Hearts. I don't think we're gonna get that a deal that they could potentially get. The issue's not so much the deal, I think it's the availability of vets out there to be able to provide the services and to give us that lower cost. And I definitely would, and I had the ideas I heard today from Ms. Lucas. So we will move forward with them. I appreciate that they've taken a very dynamic leadership role, understanding their issues, and are afraid to talk about their population and make the time, and those are things that in the past we couldn't even have a discussion about. So moving forward. So moving forward, I would rather work with Stray Hearts because that's the best bank for our taxpayer dollar. And I agree, the twenty-five thousand we put aside, let's get it out there in the community. But I don't know if the county can do it more efficiently or better than Stray Hearts could. So I'd rather let them take the lead and help fund their efforts if possible because we're not going to do it better than they could.
I'm seeing Ms. Lucas having some really good ideas and a lot of energy to get this done. And she knows more about it than us. And I will continue to offer our support to her and her...
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, though, would you generally expect to see another report? Would you like to come back and go to the commission? I certainly would like to see.
How about right after you find out about that grant, submit the first meeting in February, if you're able to come in and let us know where we're at on that?
We'd love to.
Good idea, Commissioner. Thank you. That's a positive, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, moving on the agenda. Item eleven is Resolutions and Orders. I made approval of Resolution twenty, two thousand seventeen dash sixty, Resolution Establishing Legal Holidays Operating Hours for County Offices and Closing for the Calendar 2018. We presented a copy of that resolution. Listen, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen different days. They matched the state's recommended calendar. And the union gave their endorsement to it. Remove, Mr. Chairman, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash sixty. Okay, I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty, Resolution Establishing Legal Holidays Operating Hours for County Offices and Closing for County Offices for the Calendar 2018. And a second. What are your thoughts?
Commissioner O'Donnell? Do I show that? Yes. Commissioner, my dear friend. Mr. Chairman, that's right.
Yes, thank you. Item twelve is County Managers Reporting Matters. I made the approval to move meeting dates from January second, two thousand eighteen, to January ninth, two thousand eighteen, and January sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, to January twenty-third, which happens to be my mom's birthday, your mom's birthday too. Last year was on the same day too. So I made Mr. Ford.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we talked about this. We just want to make it official for the public to know that we're officially moving those two meetings in January. So I would like approval of the board so that we know we're sitting there.
Do you all think that those are the two?
That could work for you?
You all agree with the meeting date change? Commissioners, any objections of the reason? Or the first one is the staff is off. Just, well, that'd be really hard to get the packet out early. Second one, we're all going to be gone in M A C and edge classes. So that's the reason for those. Okay, so I guess you have a non-voting, binding approval of shaking our heads and rather... Item B is update to the Commission of Various Items Effective Past Calendar. Mr. Ford.
Okay, first, before I forget, Mr. Hill in the time department wanted me to remind the board that he still needs a couple of appointments for the Board of Adjustments, District Three, Five, and Two. He needs new names for the Board of Adjustments. So, Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner O'Donnell, please.
Mr. Chairman, I know that there were, was an individual that submitted a letter of continuing.
But Mr. Thomas submitted his letter for the board, the other board.
It's John Gonzalez, I think.
I'll follow up, but he just texted me earlier this morning. He still needs a couple of names for your committee.
Do you have an idea how many times they'll meet, they need average? Is it only a couple times a year?
Whenever there's something for them to hear. I think they could meet up to once a month, but yes, typically when they have something actually reviewed, so it's not very often. So thank you. Next, I wanted to update the Commission on progress at the Songri Stolbal Volunteer Fire Department building. That building is being put up. It's moving along pretty well. We had a couple issues that have come up. The biggest being septic. The Mexico Environment Department denied our request for a closed vault system in Songri Stolbal. We've had a couple issues with closed vault systems in the Environment Department instead. But their request at this time is a bit of a hybrid with a closed vault and a gray water beach field area. So we're going to go ahead and accommodate that request. It will require a slight change in order, a couple thousand dollar increase to the cost of that. But for the most part, the building's moving along greatly. And we appreciate the weather because I think we will have it completed before the end of January, potentially, it's moving along. So now, moving on to the Royal Seco Community Center. Same issues with the Environment Department. We've been working with them to try and get a variance for the septic. We had asked for a closed vault system there in Royal Seco as well. They responded with a couple other requests. We're doing our best to meet their requests and finalize an approval of that variance with the Environment Department in Seco so that we can reopen that building. However, it should be noted that while it was closed, we did experience vandalism in the building. Somebody did get inside the old school building and found some old paint and went ahead and took upon themselves to vandalize the building and just make it a bigger mess. So another issue, I do want to thank Facilities Department for really getting in there and addressing issues. There's more to, more to it than it appears. So as you close down a building, that's usually when you really get into what the fundamental problems are. And the school building out there is going to be quite a bit of time and energy to get up and run. And so we are focusing on the gym building at this time. The gym building is a good, strong building. We replaced that roof. And so we're moving forward, trying to get that back online to open it up to the public. Figueroa Sanchez Park. Updating on the concession and restrooms. We did need to hire a contractor so that we could meet all the permit requirements from the town of Taos. And they will oversee the installation of this prefab structure. So we're at a point now with taking a contractor that we can submit a request to purchase the structure. I know we had talked about this over a year ago. And now at this point, we are ready to purchase the structure. We do hope that that can be installed and ready for next softball season. So we're moving forward with that. So my senior center, that is one of those buildings. Once we closed it down, we found a whole lot of other issues that needed to be addressed. So I thank Facilities Department once again for really getting in and addressing a lot of those issues. We had some problems with our well system up there that they have remedied. And we're still working on completing the fire suppression system. But they've done a lot of cleanup and upgrades while that building's been closed. And unfortunately, it does not look like it'll be open in time for Christmas. But early next year, definitely, we'll get back in there and feed these issues. Had a very productive meeting last week with the U S Forest Service Supervisor. He wanted to get together to really just talk about opportunities to collaborate between the county and Forest Service. A lot of our discussion focused on roads. So they are about to bring on a new engineer at the U S Forest Service. They're excited about getting some updates from that new engineer on road maintenance programs, things that we also need to work on to share with them. But in collaboration, it sounds like we can all better maintain roads if we work together. And they have certain budget shortfalls as well coming from the federal side. And they have requests to put money into different types of programs. So the excited roads, we talked about those collaborations. What else can we do to work with the Forest Service to try and keep as much of that federal money in our community as possible? So I felt it was a very productive conversation. And we're going to follow that up in a couple months and keep on talking about our opportunities. One thing that did come up was the idea of a master agreement with us and the Forest Service. A couple other counties have done this. And we have a template. We're going to send to our attorneys and get a look at that, see if we can bring that to the full board. But basically, the master agreement's an agreement to agree. And then anything beyond that would be an amendment to that so we can get into specific projects and have amendments to that master agreement to identify and address specific issues. But an agreement to agree is a good start. And so we'll probably be bringing that in the next couple of months for the board to talk about and discuss. Next, I attended the North Central R T D Audit X A Conference last Monday. Once again, they have clean audit, no findings, and we'll be preparing their CAFR for a CAFR report. So another good, solid clean audit for the N C R T D. Also, along with Commissioner Farrow, we're able to attend the Revenue Stabilization Committee in Santa Fe last week. We got the opportunity to hear about the tax reform study that they had commissioned with Ernst &amp; Young. Interesting discussion, a lot of important things that were brought up. I think what was unfortunate was they didn't feel like there was a lot of recommendations for implementation. So at the end of it, the report was informational with no real concrete steps to implement. So my opinion was we will not see any change in this three-day session, even though there was recommended ideas, but no recommended path to implementation. So we can probably keep on talking and discussing this, but they did bring up the idea of pyramiding has both advantages and disadvantages to the state. Removing all the exemptions is an opportunity as well as it could hurt. And everything that they're doing is attempt to be revenue neutral. So they're not necessarily looking to get rid of exemptions to raise the tax revenue, but what they would do is try and neutralize everything to go with the tax rate ultimately for the end of the year. So it was interesting. It was a lot of taxpayer money used for another report.
Right, I was at State Firm and I was at State College to prepare, which Representative Gonzalez made a point that, you know, we have people locally that could have done this. And he seemed pretty upset to me that they went to Georgia State.
Yeah, it was Georgia State that did mostly, provided the data and gave us mostly the information for a report in Mexico they had as a move.
Representative Gonzalez did make a big point about that. Also, the other thing that was telltale about that is if he looked at the change in administration and he looked at the dip in when it, when all of this occurred, was approximately seven years ago. So he can figure out.
Yeah, in retrospect, looking at the tax cuts that were implemented early on in the previous administration, it didn't really warrant the return on the promises, didn't yield return. So you do see where our state got hurt by those tax cuts. And we never really had rebounded based on the promises of the return on those tax cuts. So that was telling. And then we did have a very good meeting last week of the I G C. The I G C met, Kit Carson Boardroom, the managers and mayors of the I G C. Major discussion topic was just how do we want to revitalize the I G C? What do we want from the I G C? And what does the future look like? And do we want economic development to be underneath that control of the I G C? So it was a great meeting. We went around the room. We had a really good opportunity to talk to each other. And I think when we walked away, we realized that we have a pretty good working relationship amongst all of our municipalities and counties. Even though we may have some internal arguments here and there, we worked together. We're unified. And we go to Santa Fe with that unified approach. It's a powerful thing. And we all agree to that. So the next meeting in January, there will be a tough decision there for us to make. And the big request was more participation from the leaders and decision makers. So that's me. I need to be there more often than not. Not an alternative, but it does mean they want the managers and mayors to be there so that at this quarter, we can really make decisions and carry some weight to that I G C. So I felt it was positive. And so on personal, I just want to let the board know I intend to be out of the office on December twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Again, to go to a bowl game that hasn't happened in fifty-seven years, so the waggies. And Mr. Farrow, your question?
They canceled that little lock of entrance.
So I'll take it out. It's going to prove that the Mexican sports fans like us...
By doing it once every hundred and fifty-two years.
That does help. It does create some interest when it's very rare.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, Deon, have you discovered anything new on the lighting of the intersection of, what is it, C one-ten and sixty-eight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. We did find out it is our responsibility. So last Monday, Kit Carson went out there on their behalf, replaced most of the lights. There's two that need required, special fuse that they ordered as soon as that comes in. Though it means that fuses and all lights will be opening. But on that note, we are responsible for most of the lights on sixty-eight. So we're going to work with Kit Carson on the contract so that we have them available to us to continue to maintain and replace them immediately. But one-ten should be brighter than it was when we first brought that out.
If they do it for the first six months or a year, then the contract is something that's our design.
So I think there were four out. And one was, I didn't see Kit Carson out there, but there are still three that were out. So they will be getting to...
Yes, those are the ones that he mentioned weren't actually the light bulb problems of fuse. And so they were made in order to fuse. And I think he told me that out of nine, six of them were out. So originally, if most of them were out, they were able to replace the bulbs. And I think three, those other three are still out. Thank you. What's in...
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I believe I sent you an email on the triage crisis rules are coming out. And there is a hearing January thirty-first. I would sure like to have someone from the county look over those rules and make comments on those rules. This will now allow us to move forward on some kind of detox or crisis triage center now that the rules are out. And, you know, we've lagged on this, what, many years? So we're waiting for the triage crisis rules because there's no funding for social detox. So with that being said, I would really appreciate if someone attends that hearing, comments on those rules. I will look over the rules too and see if I can attend. The three-way stop sign, have you been able to move that project forward on Whit Road?
As we were, there's a little further investigation. Nina ordered the three-way stop due to the light traffic on Tapiaan Road. So we're still investigating that at this time. We haven't made a determination to install those three-way stop because of that. It's a short jog from State Highway, and there may just not be enough traffic.
It was that way years ago for a little while. So we may find out if somebody, the road department, remembers. But I remember that being a three-way stop for a brief time.
It's just a stop speeding. I'm still getting company. And it would at least help slow down the speeding on Whit Road.
So I'll follow up with our superintendent. He has a good debate. He gave a brief update the other day, and I'll get more details from him.
All right. And then, I wanted to, I did tour Shadow Mountain Ranch. And they are working on the possibility of working with us. It accepts insurance, but it would be nice if maybe you could go out there and talk to them. We can access the indigent fund, do something. We've been lagging on this for how many years? And are not, you know, we don't know what to do. But let's, let's see if we could, you know, in the meantime, whether we could get bids from different detox facilities on what they would charge. I just feel like this is stalled and this was one of our priorities at the retreat last year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, we'll do this again. I do want to remind the commission, we made an attempt in the spring. We did do two different R T S at that time. So I don't want to, I don't want to concede that we're stalling or that we're dropping the ball. There's just been so many changes in all of the tools, even with the idea of the triage center. We'll definitely look at that. I don't know what kind of substantial input we could put in, considering we don't run that detox. So I do hope that the private providers are the ones that are really reviewing it from their practical experience. Just like so many other things, the county may not be able to do it better if we've never done it before. So we'll certainly look into it and do what we can to represent it.
And I don't think we're stalling, Mr. Chairman. I just think the whole behavioral health is a mess and thank the state for that.
Yes, and we're looking for a change in the atmosphere around that if we get a change in the office.
What I did learn that if people are in the jail and they are under twenty-six and they have parents' insurance, then we can send them out to a detox facility under their parents' insurance. So these are kind of things, I mean, if we're just doing piecemeal, you know, I keep hearing hospital gets people in and they just send them out. They're not stepping up. You know, we still have this crisis. So if there's some way we could think outside the box and do something, even if it's just one or two people a year right now, until we get rolling on something. Thank you.
Did you want to continue your report?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, commissioners, is item thirteen, Commissioners Reports and Matters. There's two reports of the Global Attention Center inspections attached. Um, those are part of the record. Item B, uh, new business.
Ah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on this. I haven't read your report either.
Well, it was in the packet, Commissioner, that was delivered to us Friday.
I would like to comment on my report with Commissioner from the District Four.
Commissioner Blankenhorst, is this name?
So we, um, I don't need reminding from you. Um, so we, um, inspected the facility. Uh, everything basically looks good. Uh, there were a few minor deficiencies, which I'm sure could be easily corrected. Um, and, uh, yes, so I, I just wanted to say we were very impressed. And I don't know if, uh, anyone else wants to come in. I would also like, after this scroll down, to look at what the chairman wrote.
What, are you my keeper now? What is it?
So I don't know.
Thank you. Item B, update to Commissioners. New business to be considered at future meetings. Commissioner, is anything?
Mr. Chairman, um, just wondering if there was any follow-up on the request of Commissioner um, Gallegos had made with regards to the management of our hospital?
There was a meeting, Mr. Madalena. Um, and to see if there's anyone else interested, possibly you and I, the Presbyterian, those feelers will go out and, uh, review the lease and provisions, um, if a change is, is determined. Um, so legal staff is looking into all the, the ways to make things possible if something were to arise.
Okay, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I like time-wise, so if we're in a, if we're in a, possibly.
I think they're looking at something by mid-February, have an answer or something.
Okay.
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner Madalena definitely turned over everything to Legal. Legal's reviewing the lease, giving us their best, um, advice to go forward in the lease. Uh, we gave them our ideas, a lot of the comments that we heard and concerns that we heard so that they understand what, where we're coming from and why we're looking at the legal.
And, Mr. Chairman, so I'd like to see some sort of a report on that, on those legal reviews, uh, possibly the, one of the meetings in January.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner, Commissioner Blankenhorst?
It's, there's two, um, lines of inquiry here with the hospital. One is, uh, I didn't understand, you correct me, come on. One, one is, um, provisions within the lease that we might consider changing. Um, and then the other is actually new management. Is that correct?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorst, at this time, we have a really improved the new management. We wanted to see all of our opportunities, how, if that would be possible with, what mechanism we would have available to us. The other thing we did ask or brought up with discussion with Legal is whether or not it's possible to have a representative, representation from the board on T H S board.
So it's certainly one of us, but from point team, I think.
So your concern specific to whether statutory not allowed for us to do that, that's something they're looking into. See if it is, uh, an issue and if it is a problem directly, how can we have a representation on the board? We're not the only county, the only hospital, and other counties do have representation on the local hospital boards. So there's got to be a way that we can have a little more representation. And I think it is important that this board be able to be represented, to hear what's going on and report back to the body, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. It, it, I, there's no statutory, uh, conclusion for it. There's no law that says it can't be done. The argument in the past has been all liability, but I never totally bought into that. So I'm glad you made that inquiry and, and like Commissioner Madalena, I look forward to that on a future agenda.
Thank you. Does he have something?
But, Mr. Chairman, I believe, uh, when Commissioner Gallegos made the request, it was to look at, um, the timing of the actual population of the board of the hospital. And I, that's how I feel as well, as well. So I just want services that our citizens need to get operated. And that's what else to be the utmost concern and.
Yeah, I'm going to use the floor. Thank you. Okay, I have to see.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I still want to ask about the inspection in court. Is that something we were to accept? Uh, or did you talk to M A C? Do we have to do a formal acceptance or just a report?
We, we have to.
Why, I just wanted to hear what the county manager said.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Madalena, in the past, we've reviewed with M A C, there is no formal requirement of the statutes very vain. All it says is once a year, commissioners should view to the facility. And that's very vain. So there's no formal approach. What we've done, I believe, is great, and I appreciate you kind of leading the charge on that and getting our commissioners over there. So just being in there, being present and taking a walk to the jail is the requirement of the commission.
All right, thank you.
Possibly on another level, any accreditation process that they hope to begin so that will be added to that if they meet that. There's nine current facilities that are, have met the accreditation. I hope that we're, we're soon to follow the other nine counties.
Mr. Chairman, I was actually at the jail this morning to address, uh, two of the shifts that are doing training. Uh, addressed the previous two shifts a couple of weeks ago, and that is part of the training now is with the intention of getting supervision. All of the staff are aware of that goal. And, um, of course, the question to me as managers, how will we re-board them for achieving that goal? So we will need to look at our budget. I've dropped that a few times with the commission. We will likely need to support the detention center as they reach for those goals because they should be rewarded when they achieve those goals.
It's not easy. It's very lofty, but I think it's something they can do with the paperwork that I reviewed very, um, welcome to see it, um, and the change that has been made in, in the last year regarding our documentation. It's making me feel a lot better to multiply the board's strength. Okay, anything else? Item C, announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say the Greces Queblos Solar Array is now fully operational. It is the first Indian tribe-owned solar array in the state of Mexico. So, uh, they had a ribbon cutting and then went operational. So that is a, a big deal for, uh, people of Piñasco. They have a hundred and ten homes, and they'll have virtually free electricity. And then, uh, it will service a total of six hundred homes. So the rest kind of gets out to the Piñasco area. So, uh, wonderful event, and glad to see that they are online.
There is nothing else? Commissioners, item fourteen, motion to adjourn. So move, Mr. Chairman. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, I'll hear you say aye. Aye. All right, same, uh, signed, proposed. Thank you all for being here. Uh, have a safe holiday season to you and your families.